With that said, I'll start off. My name is Town Manager James Ayers for the purpose of the folks on the call. We're going to go ahead and do a roll call of the participants to establish the quorum. We'll start out with Mayor Owens.
All right, I'm here and I'm at home.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up, we have Mayor Protem, Betty Selby.
I'm here.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Commissioner Christine Walker.
Here.
Good evening. We're also on the roll call, Commissioner Borland.
Here.
Next up on the roll call, Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Next up on the roll call, Commissioner Burke.
Here.
And last on the roll call, Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Okay, we've got a quorum and we're ready to go. We'll take a moment of silent meditation, so everybody just do what they want to. Anyhow, we'll take a moment. All right, this is a little bit awkward. We have pledged allegiance to the flag, so let's get started. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, without any doubt.
Liberty and justice for all. I was breaking up, I think. Anyhow, we got through it. I think now we need a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda that's presented. Can we have a motion?
I move.
Who is? Motion by Commissioner Walker.
Okay, motion by who?
Commissioner Walker, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, was there a second?
Second.
All right, a second to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, seems to be the eyes have it. We approve the consent agenda that's presented, A and B, and we'll just move on. All right, James, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate the vote on the adoption of the agenda. And we did receive some new guidance from the state legislature has put some new rules in effect as of Monday, their new law.
Okay.
It will require us to do a roll call for every vote, even one like that. If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Go ahead, because I don't vote anyhow. Go ahead, James.
Yes, sir, thank you. We'll go around. Mayor Protem, Selby for the adoption of the agenda. Aye or nay?
Aye.
To Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
Aye.
All right. All right, and Mr. Mayor, next up on the agenda for action would be the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
This is Darryl. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah. Is there a second? I know there is. All right, we have a motion, a second to approve consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Oh, well, go ahead and do your thing, James.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we had a motion by Commissioner Collins and a second by Commissioner Walker. So, if it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and we'll do the roll call again in accordance with the new state law.
Go ahead.
Mayor Protem, Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor, looks like we have unanimous action on the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion on the consent agenda. Seems to be approved. We'll move on.
Yes, sir. Item number five on the agenda, this is Presentations. All of these are for information. In this particular case, we'll start out with five A. We won't read the entire proclamation, but it's important for us to recognize, May 3rd through 9th, 2020 is Municipal Clerks Week. This, the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and municipal clerk provides a professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government, all at the levels. Now, for folks who are interested in seeing the full text of this, it's in their agenda package. So, we want to recognize Municipal Clerks Weekend. As proclamations are done, they're signed by the mayor on behalf of the board of commissioners. Item number five B is another proclamation. This one is National Public Works Week Proclamation, May 17th through 23rd, 2020. I'll just read the preamble to this. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the town of Manio. For the full text of this proclamation, that's also shown in Agenda Package for members of the public who are interested in reading about the National Public Works Week proclamation. Item number five C, this is an update on the town website schedule. For this update, our IT department head, Carl Woody, will be sharing information with the board of commissioners.
Hi, how you doing?
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, who's this?
Hi, my name's Carl Woody, I'm with the technology.
Oh, Carl, yeah, I know, I didn't catch your voice, I'm sorry.
Before I get started, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the team that we've assembled. It's a cross-functional team that consists of four members, James Ayers, Melissa Dickerson, Michelle Bunce, and myself. And we're, all four of us are working with a contractor with our ideas and our design elements and so forth with the contractor to make sure they are done. We're also working with all departments to get current content and so forth, so when we deploy the new website, it will be, it'll have current contact, content timeline. I just want to go over a quick timeline here. The final, the final design approval happened April 23rd for the homepage and the internal pages, and that's just the design standpoint. From April 24th to May 29th, the contractor will be working on deploying those format changes in what they call the staging site. During that time, we'll also be working with all departments to ensure that we have all the correct content, updated content, pictures, videos, or whatever it may be. Training will occur the first week of June. The training will be for those that are editing pages and for the admins that will be doing the backend management and so forth of the new website. During June into July, we'll be finalizing our content. There's just a lot of content that needs to be updated, videos, forms, there's a lot of outdated forms, so we want to update all that information, so when we go live, everything is current and up to date. And our deployment is set for July 31st. So, with that said, I'm going to switch to the monitor here and show you what we have All right, so this is what they call the staging site. There's some changes that need to happen on this site, but you can see there's a large image that three images will switch between. There's still some changes that they have to do on this. And then we have what's called a spotlight. If there's a video here, they can click in it and it'll enlarge very nice and so forth. And then we've got our basic calendar news and some open data information on the bottom. So, the other part that I wanted to show, if I go, it's very small from all the way out here, so I think I can get to the, this is the, the content for, or the inside pages is what they'll look like. So, they're formatted pretty nice videos, you have contact information, you can have resource boxes, you could have a lot of things on this side. So, we have to go through every page to make sure that we have the current information in there and whatever's relevant. If there's a lot of resources, resources on the side. We're looking at putting frequently asked questions in there, so just to help the end user navigate and find what they want. And this is, it looks like they made a change in the last hour. This did not look like this earlier. So, they're supposed to move these changes over, so, but that's where we're at right now. Just, some of the content's been moved over there, but we just need to go through it, scrub it, make sure everything looks good, correct, updated.
It looks great. I mean, the photography.
Yeah, it's, we contracted with a local vendor to go around and make, or take current pictures, and he's done an absolute wonderful job on grabbing that information. But a lot of those pictures aren't even in this website yet, so we still have to go and update all these.
What is, what is the icon there at the top right? Is that?
This is what's called your accessibility.
Oh, okay.
I can, I can see what it is.
I'm just not familiar.
So, this is for those that, let's say.
Like a bigger screen.
Yeah, so there's a.
Loading. Screen reader enabled. Green screen is normal, one and green. Use your way accessibility menu close. Arena, picture. Cementio waterfront, arena is located in the.
So, these are just some of the accessibility options that we'll have for those that may not know how to read. It'll read to them, and there's a lot of different.
Open accessibility menu button. Dual tips enabled. Press enter to move or hide the accessibility.
Turn off, can't see from here.
Accessibility menu open. Accessibility menu on. Picture.
There you go.
Show height, length, frequency. Screen reader disabled.
There we go.
Oh, my gosh.
I can't see it from here, so it's pretty far away from me, but these are some of the things that newer websites have that you just, it helps supply whoever's attending or whoever's reading our website, it'll help them to be able to read it. You can change the contrast for those that may be vision impaired to help them be able to see it and so forth. So, it's, it's a very nice function to have.
Is that going to be labeled in any way in case someone doesn't know what it is, like we did?
It's a click on it.
Well, I didn't know, like, we'd go here for.
I mean, we'll probably provide some guidance when we deploy this out.
Okay.
You know, what are all the different functions and so forth with our website? But, right now, if they hover over it, it just says access, I think accessibility.
And if I, and if I may, this is Town Manager Ayers. Commissioner Burke, one of the reasons that this particular feature is added to the site is to give us full ADA accessibility and compliance with the new laws, and that's the universal symbol that's being required by the ADA to designate those functions either for the visually impaired or other folks who may need some additional assistance, either with the text-to-voice or the increased brightness or whatever features. So, we're real excited to make sure that we're now going to be 100% compliant.
That's all I have for right now.
Looks great.
All right, thank you, Mr. Woody. Next up on the agenda, five D, also under Presentations, this is for information. With request for an update on the town common schedule, we'll go back to the Dare County Tourism Board grant where the town of Manio received a $221,000 grant against a $763,000 in projected construction costs. As noted when the project and grant had been discussed here, the Dare County Tourism Board grant requires us to finish by June 2021, but our goal all along has been indicated, we want to beat that deadline and get the town common done before next tourist season. So, the Dare County Tourism Board final documents and grant agreement were received and signed in March of 2020. We solicited the engineering services required to take this project to the next phase in April 2020. If the contract is approved later tonight on the agenda, engineering will start in May 2020. The highest rated engineering firm, interestingly enough, submitted a draft schedule for this, and the proposed schedule from this point on would be engineering design done by June, bidding and related documents by July, contractor bidding and board approval, which will be required for state law, would be done in August. The contractor would mobilize after Labor Day. Primary infrastructure, utilities, parking lot, and related infrastructure would be done by December, and there may be some residual landscaping in early 2021 in that part of the planning season. But the goal here is to make sure we are done well before the next tourist season and actually have some time for grow-in and making sure everything from lighting to facilities have been tweaked. So, that's the latest update with key milestones on that project. I know this topic will come up later in the agenda as we look to our potential approval of the engineering contract so we can enter the next phase. Questions for members of the board before we move on to the next agenda item?
Yes, Commissioner Burke, that's an aggressive schedule they put together.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Burke. The, the original schedule that the tourism board had allowed us to go out to June 2021, we actually believe that we can accelerate schedule. We've got, I was, first of all, I was very pleased that the engineering firm that was the highest rated was the only one to submit a proposed schedule, and they had a good aggressive schedule and have dedicated resources to this. So, that looked like it could cut off at least 30 to 60% of the overall schedule. Also, we're trying to be careful on the construction phase because we don't want to, we need to have a construction lay-down area for the contractor, so we wanted to focus on infrastructure, utilities, and the parking lot itself first, and then as they move off that, make sure we can go after the park areas, the turf grass, landscaping, and areas like that. So, by resequencing this and having a more aggressive schedule on some of these, the consulting activities, it looks like we're able to beat the original schedule by several months. And if there's no other questions, then we'll go ahead and move on on the agenda.
The engineering firm that was the highest rated?
Yes, yes, Mayor Protem, Selby.
Um, who drew the plans? Did they already draw the plans, or do I need to ask that later on in the meeting?
Well, no, this is, no, Mayor Protem, it's absolutely appropriate. So, the original conceptual design was done under contract between the town of Manio and a local landscape architect, and that landscape architect was John Robbins. Subsequent to that time, there was discussion that that plan needed to be tweaked, and that tweaking was done after significant board meetings and community input in which the parking and the park area, interestingly enough, plan design actually gave a little more park area and a little more parking, so it was kind of the best of both worlds. And the firm that performed that work was Green Engineering that did the tweaked design. But it's only a conceptual plan. We expect a new engineer to take that conceptual plan and the survey that was done and come up with their own design, so.
So, it's not, what we saw is not in stone?
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty close. It's pretty close. We wanted to make sure they had the conceptual plan as one of their design considerations, because we, first of all, didn't want to start from scratch, but also, we didn't want to get away from what the community vision was for this, to have both park and parking area, and we'll make sure that they get the requisite number of parking spaces and green space and facilities. We're real excited about it.
Thank you.
All right, and looking around, it looks like there are no more questions on that agenda item, so we'll move on to item, if it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, may we move on?
Yeah, do we, do we have to go to, what do we do? Just declare a public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. The public, the public hearing, item six, is the town of Manio flood damage prevention ordinance. It's for information, and.
If it's for information, we don't need a motion, do we?
We do need a motion to enter into the, enter into the public hearing and later to close the public hearing.
All right, can we have a motion to enter into the public hearing in regards to flood damage prevention ordinance and the flood maps? So, might I make a motion?
This is Commissioner Walker. I move to open a public hearing on the flood damage prevention ordinance.
Second.
And the second came from Commissioner Borland, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion, second. We enter into a public hearing with about in regards to town flood damage prevention ordinance. All approved.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the cue there. We'll do the.
There you go. Go ahead.
The roll call vote to, on the motion to enter into the hearing. So, we'll start with Mayor Protem, Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
We'll go to Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
Aye.
All right, I think, thank you.
All right. I have it, let's go.
All right, so what we're going to do, we've got two parts. So, in terms of the public comment, first, the first public comment that will come in was actually submitted by, submitted in writing by the, by a local organization, and that will be read off by the, by the town planner into the record. Now, for the, for the audience at home, we found that in the legislature passed a law on Monday, and it requires us to take these public hearings, but we need to add, make sure we accept written comments, not just tonight, or between the notice period and tonight, but also within 24 hours of this hearing. And so, this new law causes that. The first, first written comment, Melissa Dickerson, our town planner, will read that comment, that, that public comment for us. So, Melissa, would you like to go first?
Yes, Mr. Ayers, thank you very much. So, the written comment that we.
Yeah, I'm in.
It's from the Outer Banks Home Builders Association, and I'll go ahead and read the letter. Dear Mayor Owens and Manio Commissioners, thank you for your leadership as our community works to maximize its resilience by revising the flood damage prevention ordinance in preparation for the 2020 flood insurance rate maps or firms' June 19th effective date. The over 500 members of the Outer Banks Home Builders Association appreciate the complexity of the task before you and welcome the opportunity this process presents to us to apply our professional knowledge in service to the town. We are thankful for town planner Melissa Dickerson and planning staff responsiveness to our members' recommendations as the ordinance has developed in recent months and are confident that the draft before you offers sound solutions to the challenges the 2020 firm poses for construction and development standards. The association members began working in early 2017 with the surveying and engineering community to assist local planning staff in designing new flood prevention measures to address an anticipated reduction in the 2006 firm's flood zone elevations in Dare County. Extensive consideration of historical flooding, previous firms, and topographical data informed a consensus among county and municipal planning staff that administration of eight-foot standards to a revised reference level, the bottom of the lowest floor or utility, would ensure adequate flood protection in X and shaded X zones. Because our members operate in seven county and municipal jurisdictions with varying regulatory requirements, the association's paramount interest throughout our community-wide flood map discussions has been promoting common sense consistency in the development of the new local elevation standards. The association appreciates the draft flood damage prevention ordinance inclusion of a local elevation standards appropriately consistent with, with this paradigm. In addition, our association has offered extensive technical support to assist planning staff in crafting ordinance language that tailors town regulatory goals to a current construction practice. We appreciate staff's consistent availability for productive discussions to achieve an ordinance that works on paper and in practice for home builders, homeowners, and town permitting and inspection personnel. Manio's ordinance clearly reflects planning staff's belief in a cooperative approach to community resilience that incorporates community stakeholders' interests and expertise as fully as possible. We hope the association's intensive participation in the ordinance process communicates our seriousness about meeting the complex environmental and regulatory challenges involved in residential construction on our barrier islands. Thank you again for participating in the Outer Banks cooperative endeavor to address present and future flood risks, an effort we feel serves the coastal communities as a model for stakeholder inclusive regulation to promote sustainable building. Regards, Vaughn Robinson, Jay Overton, and Forte Graham.
Thank you, Town Planner Dickerson, and that is the only written comment we've received, received on this particular item. Now, it's an opportunity for the members of the public to have their voice heard. For members of the public who are listening in, right now, we're showing nine attendees from the public, and if you desire to be heard at this public hearing, note this is not the public comment section, which, this is the public hearing on the flood damage prevention ordinance and flood maps, please hit star nine on your phone, and it will raise your hand virtually so that we can see that you would like to speak. Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, we've got the first hand raised, so we'll go ahead and coordinate with this person, if it's all right.
Okay. Get their name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, for the callers, we've got a couple callers who've raised their hand. We'll ask for your name and address as you, and proceed with your speaking. So, the first, we'll identify you not by your whole number for privacy, but we'll identify you by the last four digits of your phone number. The first hand that's raised at the top in orange is 3022, and 3022, our facilitator has unmuted you, so if you'd like to identify yourself, your location, and your comment, you're most welcome to proceed. Caller with the last four digits of 3022, you're welcome to proceed. Caller 3022, it may be possible that you need to unmute your phone on your end. I know with my phone that I need to do that as well. So, on this end, you're unmuted. You may want to double-check on your end if you can unmute your phone. We're ready to hear from you. Okay, caller 3022, we may have to come back to you. It looks like there may be, we can't, we can't hear you right now, but we're going to go ahead and have our facilitator mute you for a second. We'll go to the next caller. This caller is identified by the last four digits of 2114. So, caller 2114, if you could identify yourself and your location, our facilitator has just unmuted your phone. You're welcome to proceed.
Good evening, this is Jay Overton with Album Marlin Associates, and I was speaking to you tonight as a representative of the Outer Banks Home Builders Association. I'm the legislative chairman, and I just wanted to add a couple more comments to our written statement that was provided. I wanted to let you know, Mayor Owens and the other commissioners, what a pleasure it's been to be involved in this process over the past three years. Quite often, you don't hear this, but we had a unique situation occur throughout our county where all the municipalities came together through their planning directors. We had builders, we had surveyors, we had engineers. They were all focused upon looking at what would be the best thing for our Outer Banks community. And what you're seeing tonight with your flood prevention ordinance is the result of that. But the main thing that I wanted to share with you, through my work with the North Carolina Home Builders and others within our organization, we find ourselves going across the state, and we find ourselves interacting with other people across the nation. And it has been very rewarding, as we've talked about what we've been going through here with our flood prevention ordinance over the past three years, the reaction that we have received from other community leaders saying that that's someone unheard of, that we as a community, both private and public, could come together and be able to forge a document like this. Not that everybody got exactly what they wanted, but we came up with an ordinance that was proactive for our community. Had some folks in Louisiana who, they just couldn't understand how we could facilitate something like this, and it wasn't the home builders, it was Melissa and the other planning directors, and their efforts are a reflection of who y'all are as our community leaders and as our commissioners in Manio. So, I just wanted to personally thank you in that regard, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we're going to go back to the only other caller who had their hand raised, and that was last four digits of 3022. Caller, we're going to try one more time to see if, see if we can hear you on this line, and if you could state your name, identify your location, and please provide your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, caller, we can hear you now. If you could identify yourself and your location, we welcome your feedback on the public hearing.
Sorry, a little technological problem. Okay, my name is Becky Myers. I live in Marshes Light at 216 Thompson Street. My question is, Marshes Light homeowners had our annual meeting recently by phone. We were told that SAGA has been in discussion with the town about building 16 condominiums on the hotel site. Can you share any information about that?
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I can take this.
Yeah, take it, but go ahead.
Yeah, take it, but go ahead and set her straight.
Yes. Ms. Myers, right now, we're on the public hearing for the flood damage prevention ordinance and flood maps. We'll
Oh, I thought we were on public.
It's absolutely okay. We'll go ahead and, as I'm looking at the town clerk, we'll go ahead and enter your thing as a public comment. And certainly, we're happy. In general, the public comment is not intended for questions and answers between the public members of the board or staff, but we're happy to chat with you. But we're certainly, we're not in discussions. We're waiting to receive, we expect to receive applications from an applicant, but right now, we do not have an application in hand. So hopefully, though, there'll be some future conversations with the community and whoever else, every other stakeholder on if that issue should arise and an application should be submitted. But thank you for submitting your comment.
We're on public comment. I'm sorry, I apologize. I was listening, but.
It's okay.
Thank you so much for your comment. Okay. We'll go ahead and with members of the public for the public hearing for flood damage prevention ordinance, if anybody else would like to raise their hand, it looks like we've got nobody raising. Nobody else on the board, Mr. Mayor? So it looks like we're going to close the public hearing.
All right, we'll close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing on flood damage prevention ordinance and flood maps.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, the motion is second. There's a motion second. We close the public hearing for time any flood damage prevention ordinance. All in favor? Go ahead.
If it's all right, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and do the roll call. Like, yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA. Burke, IRNA. Commissioner Mann, IRNA. Commissioner Borland, IRNA. Commissioner Walker, IRNA. And Commissioner Collins, IRNA. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looks like you have an unanimous vote to exit the public hearing.
All right, we'll declare the public hearing closed and we, all in favor of closing, we just voted, didn't we? Okay, let's move on then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number seven, public comment. This is for information for our folks listening at home. They are going to be, they'll be invited to provide their public comment. And I'll go ahead and read our traditional direction here. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and your location so that your statements can be recorded. For those people, those attendees, please hit star nine to raise your hand and we'll go ahead and see if anybody would like to submit for public comment.
James, may I cut in here just one minute? You're going to have to keep time or Becky won.
Yes, sir. The town clerk is ready. The timer is up and I think we've got a hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, so caller identified by the last four digits of 3022, our facilitator will unmute you and please identify yourself and your location, please.
Thank you. It's Jackie Myers again at 216 Compton Street in Marshes Light. Okay, I understand what you said about that we're not asked questions to be answered. But many of us, since we were told by the developer that there had been discussions with the town of Manio about building 16 condominiums, buildings, 16 condominiums, excuse me, instead of the hotel sites, we have grave concerns and I guess we just would all like to know how we find out more about that.
James, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to figure out in terms of our protocol, we certainly have a community engagement process and at the time we receive an application, we absolutely will engage the community very quickly, just like we did last time.
Can you really reiterate the process for, you know, that would involve a change for CUP and, you know, public hearing and all that?
Thank you, Commissioner Borland. Mr. Mayor, it's all right. Commissioner Borland has guided me to go ahead, update the process. So the developer, in this or any other case, in a development that's under a conditional use permit.
This is not, this is not protocol, but we'll go ahead and do it because the commissioner comments.
Oh, yes.
We usually don't comment, we usually don't comment during public hearing. But go ahead. He's a commissioner, he's got a right to ask a question.
Thank you. And Commissioner Borland, appreciate the opportunity to reiterate the process. Should the developer, in this case or any other case, submit an application to town, we will very quickly make sure to not just notify the appropriate governmental authorities, but also we've engaged the public, as we demonstrated last time. Something like this would require approval, would require referral to appropriate boards and commissions, and that also would require us to do public notice of anything like that. So we absolutely are committed to transparency in these things should an application be permitted. Thank you, Commissioner Borland. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for dispensation on that. And the caller's concern is noted for the record as a public comment. Do we have anybody else for public comment here? Please raise your hand by doing star nine on your phone, please. All right, Mr. Mayor, we're not seeing any other hands raised on this public comment, on this public comment, public comments period here.
All right, let me ask one more time. Would anybody like to be heard at public comment time? All right, here and now, we'll close the public comment period.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to the next, we'll move on to the next agenda item. This is section eight, and we've got a number of items of new business. All of these items are for action. Item number 8A is property disposals, 604 Sir Walter Raleigh. This property was acquired by the town recently, but it's not part of any town program or strategic plan or initiative. The property is surplus to the towns, who needs the town of Manio as a result. The town does anticipate budget reductions for fiscal year 2021 based on the guidance from state and county sources, which would guide us to dispose of surplus assets to try and make up the difference. We had investigated the state statute for disposal of such real property and recommending the use of sealed bids for this, as well as a reserve of $50,000, which was set, which is the last arms-length transaction here. So we're recommending authorization to dispose of this property by sealed bid in accordance with state law.
All right, you've heard from the town manager. Can we have some discussion on it?
I mean, we at least ought to get $50,000. This is Daryl. We at least start the bidding at $50,000 for that lot because that's what we paid for.
This is Commissioner Walker.
Any other comments?
This is Christine. So we will accept bids and accept the highest bid, I'm assuming.
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Walker, that's correct. And the way we use the sealed bids, the reason I had recommended a reserve price of what the prior sale was from the prior seller to Ms. Zoila Torres, from whom we bought the lot, I wanted to set that floor because we, just in case coronavirus impacts sealed bids in a way that people want to put a low wall bid there, we want to establish at least a minimum price so that we don't get stuck with a low wall bid. But we'll, again, we'll make sure we do it in accordance with state law. We have been, I've already researched those statutes.
Daryl, does that satisfy you? You want to put it in form of a motion or?
James, can we start the bid at $50,000?
I don't know why not, but that's, what do you think, manager?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And my recommendation was to have that reserve price of $50,000. We did verify in the statute that this board can put conditions like that on such a sale. And that also telegraphs the public that we're serious about this. So I'm comfortable recommending that $50,000 reserve.
Daryl, does that satisfy?
Yeah.
Do we need a, we don't need a motion on that, do we, James?
Yes, sir. This, in order to authorize me to start this, to do this.
Can we have a motion that we start the proposal out for 604 Sir Walter Raleigh at $60,000?
I'm moved to authorize.
As to Daryl's motion.
I'm moved to authorize town manager to dispose property at 604 Sir Walter Raleigh and execute all necessary documents related to the sale and closing of the subject property.
For the record, that was Commissioner Borland making that motion.
Yeah. And we got a motion of second. You got to, you got to go through your procedure, ain't you, James?
Yes, sir. There's
All right. All right, no further discussion. All right, if anybody favors the motion, say aye. Go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we may, I was looking over, Commissioner Burke made the second on the motion. And if it's all right with you, now we're okay to do the roll call vote. Would you like me to proceed with that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA. Commissioner Burke, IRNA. Commissioner Mann, IRNA. Commissioner Borland, IRNA. Commissioner Walker, IRNA. Commissioner Collins, IRNA. Mr. Mayor, it looks like there's a unanimous vote on that motion.
All right, we have unanimous vote, so the motion cares.
Yes, sir. Next up on the agenda, item 8B. This is a proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances. This is section 50-144 regarding the adjustment of bills. My understanding that is customary in terms of a utility billing, if there is a notification of a customer filling a swimming pool or doing a large pressure washing work on their property, that they can, that material, that water does not end up in the wastewater, wastewater treatment plant. So there has been, it would be the opportunity for that customer to request in writing that the sewer portion of the bill be waived because it's not being treated in sewer system. However, in order for that to happen, our ordinance would need to read that. So I want to make sure that it's actually in writing and the board has the opportunity to consider that. Just also for the record, this adjustment would only be done, applied one time per calendar year.
Would they That's what they've planned to do, say in the instance of a swimming pool.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Walker brought up the issue about notification, and it's important for the party to notify us. And they're actually expected to provide documentation, whether it's, if it's pressure washing, like an invoice, or if it's an affidavit that it was filling in the swimming pool, et cetera, we will need written documentation. I think that's appropriate, not just from a fiscal standpoint, but also make sure this can't be some oral thing. So we'd require that written documentation is requested.
All right, a motion's in order, James?
Yes, sir.
If there are any comments, any further comments, anybody want to say? All right, all in favor of the Code of Ordinance change, record it with James.
I'm of the motion to propose change to ordinance.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Burke is making the motion to, for the proposed amendment to ordinance 50-144?
Yes.
I want to make sure I could hear that.
Well, I'm having trouble hearing. Is there a second to it?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Mann has made a second. So it's ready for the roll call vote, if it's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA. Commissioner Burke, IRNA. Commissioner Mann, IRNA. Commissioner Borland, IRNA. Commissioner Walker, IRNA. Commissioner Collins, IRNA. Mr. Mayor, it looks like in this vote, sir.
All right, seems like this is all ours, so I guess the motion cares.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Next up on the agenda, item 8C. It's zoning code of ordinances amendment this time, and this is under section 12-7, boat lifts. At the April 15, at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, a board member suggested the potential deletion of a section of the zoning ordinance. And to lift that prohibition against boat lifts in marinas, a following text amendment would be required. Simply delete the words, boat lifts or any devices attached to pilings or docks and designed to suspend a boat over the water are not permitted in marinas. And that would, in order for that to be considered, this board would have to, would be expected according to procedure to refer it to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. And then also that this board of commissioners would schedule a public hearing presumably at its June 17th meeting to give enough time for the Planning and Zoning Board to come back.
All right, is a motion needed on that if it's got to go through all that procedure?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There would be a motion, a motion would be required both to refer it to the Planning and Zoning Board and to schedule a public hearing for June 17th.
I just ask, can we have a motion on the zoning code change for 12-7 boat lifts?
Does this just open the door to have further conversation or is this flat out deletion of that? I don't, I mean.
I gather it's just opening the door, but I don't know, Jason.
Right downtown in, you know, I guess the historic waterfront piece, I don't see boat lifts there, but essentially Marshes Light and beyond. You know, I think that's what we're trying to do here. Is it up to zoning and planning to figure out the details there and we're just opening the door today? Or are we, do we need to provide that detail?
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and answer the questions from Commissioner Borland, Commissioner Walker. The first, this is indeed just the first step of the process. So this is, because it was brought by a board member, it would need to go through process first with the Planning and Zoning Board, who would, you know, would address it, see if it's consistent with our plans, and make a recommendation to this board. And then there'd be a public hearing and the board would consider it. Interestingly enough, though, this particular thing is only about marinas, so it doesn't affect private property owners with their own dock and need for boat lift. And when it comes to marinas, there's a couple different categories. The town's public marina, we of course have the right to not put up a boat lift even if this prohibition is lifted. But in addition, there are private properties like, for example, whether it be Marshes Light or a place like that, Marshes Light, for example, we have a copy of their conditions, covenants, and restrictions, also known as CCNRs, where they actually prohibit boat lifts. So if a resident came to us saying they wanted a boat lift at their dock in that particular development, they would still have to go through their own homeowners association, even if we lifted this, lifted this prohibition. So there may be multiple layers for folks in those marinas to go through with their own homeowners associations.
But we on the docks said there's no chance of the docks downtown, kind of what lived on, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It was Commissioner Burke's question about downtown. The town, other than the one dock that doesn't belong to the town, all the other town docks in the marina, this board would have control over that and could, if it should choose, just never install boat lifts in there as part of that.
All right, anyone else? Who made the motion?
I'll make a motion. This is Commissioner Borland. I move to refer the proposed amendment to section 12-7 of the zoning code ordinances to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation and that the Board of Commissioners should schedule a public hearing for June 17th.
All right, is there a second?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Selby has done the second to Commissioner Borland's motion. I may do the roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First on the roll call, Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA. Commissioner Burke, IRNA. Commissioner Mann, IRNA. Commissioner Borland, IRNA. Commissioner Walker, IRNA. Commissioner Collins, IRNA.
Okay.
Your vote is unanimous.
Yeah, it seems like the motion cares. We voted to move on, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up on the agenda, item 8D. This is the fee schedule. The fee schedule accompanies the budget each fiscal year. And the board, and in the agenda package, both in front of the board as well as in the publicly available agenda package, is this multi-page fee schedule. It's been reorganized to be clearer to read, but here are the important things, especially to your constituents. Number one, and number one, no fees are going up. So on the schedule, there's no cause of go up water, sewer, or any other. Number two, we eliminated the meter tampering fee, and we eliminated this meter tampering fee because state law has been revised and does not allow the town to levy that fee. It allows the town to take other actions against those who tamper with their meter, but not to levy a fee, so that's been eliminated from this. And number three, this also, this also clarifies the commercial boat slip rate in the downtown marina at 660 a month. That had been the customer That had been the customary practice down there, but it needs to be actually written down for that to be levied. So, but as I said, no fees are going up. We've eliminated unnecessary fees. And the staff recommends approval, and it would be incorporated by reference in the budget.
This is Richie.
All right, any discussion?
What was that statement you made about no tampering fees? Who, I didn't.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Burke has addressed a question about the meter tampering fee. So in our old fee schedule, there was a $50 meter tampering fee which could be levied. However, state law has changed. That means we can't levy that tampering fee anymore. The state law does give us the right to basically civilly go after someone who tampers, but it just doesn't give us the right to just blanket levy that fee. So that was, that was a change in state law a while back.
What was your way of that situation?
Thank you, sir.
All right, any further discussion?
Just to clarify, this is Eddie Mann. Just to clarify, this is not a changing of any fees. It's just pretty much a clerical housecleaning for paperwork purposes.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, I'll address Commissioner Mann's comment. Yes, this is clerical, where it's cleaning up the organization so it's clear what fee is for what thing. And we are, and I can confirm that no fees are going up here.
Okay. All right, who wants, there you go. Go ahead, who was doing it?
This is Betty Selby. I move to approve the fee schedule as presented.
All right. Is there a socket?
I'll second. This is Christine Walker.
Okay. James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll do the roll call vote. Mayor Protem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, aye or nay? Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, aye or nay? Right, Mr. Mayor, it looks like.
All right, sounds like you know, Mr. James.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. We'll move forward with item 8E on the agenda. This is the pay plan. This is also something that is incorporated in the budget, and that's why we go ahead and go through this. We had, actually have some good news on this. So we were able to piggyback on the salary study done by Southern Shores. And actually happened to, there was an excellent consultant there who I'd met previously. And so we were able to get some great help there. So it was great timing. What I can tell you, and this is important, there are no changes to the pay grades, the classifications, or the ranges, which is really good. So I'm really pleased to hear that. The only thing, and point number three, the only thing we've done, we've spotted new or reclassified positions in the appropriate grade after consultation with a consultant. So for example, we have, we have proposed a potential, this is a potential position. Again, it would still be up to the will of the board, is for a few months to have a deputy town clerk position to overlap with the existing town clerk as part of a transition. Again, that's not been approved position. It's a potential position. It would have to be approved by the board as part of the budget process. But we want to make sure that our pay plan reflects either reclasses or potential new positions so that we don't come vote, have you all come vote on this again. So, but I recommend approval of the pay plan by the Board of Commissioners.
All right, any discussion?
So it's not approving any, and we would be, it would come back to us before we would approve any new hires or positions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll address Commissioner Walker's question. This, by simply by putting, for example, that position of deputy town clerk, just by putting this pay plan does not say that we're authorized, or does not say that the board has appropriated those funds. The board would only appropriate those funds at the time of the new budget, which would be presented to you later in the month. So, but it's a great clarification.
And just for my clarification, this is not changing any salaries or positions. It's simply just bringing up clerical issue for you, correct?
Oh, well, there are, there are some reclassified positions based on the consultant. Let me, oh, it didn't show up in red.
James, you might, James, the board might be aware of it. I'm sure they are. But you might explain this a little bit clearer, that Becky's planning on retiring, and you've got to have a replacement. And you're thinking about having somebody early to learn the ropes and everything. I don't think you mentioned that. The board might know it, but that's the reason for the position, I think. Am I right, James?
Yes, sir. That deputy town clerk is that position. Also, and that's absolutely right, Mr. Mayor. In addition, we did have a couple of reclasses. They call them reclass or reclassification. So that's a great point Commissioner Mann brought up. There were a couple of these positions that, based on that salary study, there's a clarification on if we have a fire marshal slash emergency operations manager. That's at a classification 16. The, also, that the recommendation from the consultant was the town planner to pay grade of 21. So based on the equivalent to the other positions we have there, the public works director and the water sewer department director. Mr. Man, Commissioner Mann, is that, is that all right?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right, is there any other questions or anybody want to offer anything? All right, can we have a motion on the pay plan?
This is Daryl. I motion to approve the pay plan.
Socket?
I'll second.
And Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Mann has seconded it. And if it's all right, may I do it? I'll go ahead and do the roll call, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Mayor Protem Selby, aye or nay? Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, aye or nay? Mr. Mayor, it appears that there's a unanimous.
Go ahead, James.
Well, thank you. I was presenting to you a unanimous vote on that item. If you'd like, if you'd like, I can move on to item 8E.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that's what I said.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, it's item 8F. This is, it's titled grant agreement for Fourth of July fireworks. This was originally put on the agenda because in order to, the board has authorized the town manager to apply for grants. When we have a grant like this, though, the board reserves the right to accept a grant and all of its conditions. In this particular case, the town was awarded a grant from the Dare County Tourism Board in the amount of $12,831 for the Fourth of July special event specifically earmarked for fireworks. Now, I will tell you this grant agreement, because there's a new condition in it that it specifically excludes pandemics or hurricanes as grounds for delaying or failing to deliver fireworks at an event. So we don't deliver, we don't get the money. So that's, that was, that's, you needed to know that as a board. There are a few other issues that have come up as well. In late breaking news, NAGS had just announced they have canceled their 2024 July fireworks and celebration. And as my staff report indicated, we looked at Governor Cooper's latest information that he just put out there in terms of the three-phase program to reopen the economy. Unfortunately, it looks like from the phasing they're presented, that we would not be able to put 5,000 people. Well, last we had 5,000 plus people from 17 states, we wouldn't be able to put that large a crowd gathering here on anyway. Last but not least, the, I mean, that's the health, safety, and welfare thing right there. But there's also a fiscal component, too. So spending these funds right now, when we know, we know already that we're going to have decreased revenues in next fiscal year. So this, this particular.
Plus, if we put it on, we're going to have serious distancing problems. And we ought to go with our neighbors in NAGS head, but go ahead, James. Go ahead, finish up.
That was perfect. That was actually perfect, Mr. Mayor, because I actually had a comment today from law enforcement that the idea that we can do social distancing of six feet with the number of visitors we would expect, even a reduced crowd, would be near impossible. So my recommendation at this point is to. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I do not believe it's possible. So I'm recommending cancellation of the Fourth of July special event, including both the fireworks contract and the fireworks grant agreement.
Why don't you put in if we use the motion till 2021?
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. We, just like Dare Day, we would be pleased to plan ahead for Fourth of July 2021. Yes, sir.
So do we have, will we ourselves, are we losing money other than the grant funding?
The only money that we would lose at this point, and this, and thank, oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm addressing comment from Commissioner Walker. This is actually a really important point, because if we don't cancel our fireworks agreement now, we would be on the hook for the $41,500 for the contract. Or if we canceled late, it would be 35,000. Right now, if we cancel now, there's only a $7,500 termination fee, which then the balance we refunded to the town. So we would actually recoup some of the money we've already paid as a pre-show advance.
All right, you've heard from town manager about, go ahead, somebody.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a difficult thing to do, but it's the right thing to do. And, you know, it's, I mean, it's only two months away, and a lot could change, you know, in two months. So we need to do what's best. I guess I'll make a motion, much as I hate to. This is Commissioner Walker. I'll authorize the town manager to cancel the July 4th event, including the fireworks grant and the fireworks contract.
All right, is there a socket? All right, who is that?
The second was from Commissioner Borland, sir.
All right, there's a motion, a socket, that we cancel the July 4th fireworks and along with, what else you say, Christine? You said something else, too. But anyhow, we canceled July 4th. Oh, and recoup our money and do the best we can. We're getting the money back, something like that. All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, James. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, sir. Yes, I'll go ahead and do the roll call. The Mayor Protem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
Aye.
All right, aye, same to have it. The motion cares. We'll cancel the fireworks. Go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a point of privilege, if I may, the public can't see the faces. Here, I can, and I see heavy hearts and sadness from the members of the Board of Commissioners in this. And I want to acknowledge, I want to acknowledge that and promise you that we will work hard to make the following year event successful, as we try to return to normal. Thank you for that opportunity, Mr. Mayor, and I'll move on to the next agenda item. It's all right. Okay, item 8G. Thank you, sir. Item 8G is professional services contract for the town common. In this particular, this agenda item was referred to earlier. In this, in this case, the town has followed the state mandated process by which we solicit professional services, including engineering, architecture, surveying, and landscape architecture. It's a very specific process. It's called a qualification-based selection process. And the state requires us to select a firm based on their qualifications first. And only after they're selected and highest rated do we negotiate a contract at a fair fee. If those negotiations fail, then the statute directs us to negotiate with the next best qualified firm. Now, we did have four firms submit qualifications packages. They were all responsive. They had appropriate qualifications, and they were ranked based on the criteria envisioned in the law. We had our review team, and if these criteria included technical approach, work experience, firm and staff qualifications, and past performance. We also posted this both locally and statewide, and we did follow the state statute in which we solicited historically underutilized businesses as well. Our highest rated firm is SBA certified as a hubzone small business concern, and it's also prequalified by the North Carolina Department of Transportation as a small professional service firm. What I'm proposing is that the highest rated firm, Albemarle and Associates out of Kill Devil Hills, that would be allowed in accordance with the law to negotiate a contract with the highest rated firm, or if they're unsuccessful, go to the next highest rated, and that authorize the town manager to sign the contract and any amendments thereto. And that's the recommendation put before the board.
All right, you heard from manager, wish your wishes.
Could you repeat that? This is Betty Selby. Could you repeat that one more time, please? Thank you.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Selby wanted me to repeat, and I'll go ahead. I'll list the three steps that are required. Is that it? Thank you, Mayor Protem. Three steps would be that the town manager is to negotiate a contract with the highest rated firm. Number two, in the event contract negotiations are unsuccessful with the highest rated firm, the town manager is to negotiate with the second highest firm and so on until a contract is successfully negotiated. And three, the town manager is to sign the contract and any amendments thereto. Is that satisfactory, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, you've heard from town manager, wish your wishes.
What exactly are the professional services this prospective company is going to do?
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Mayor, I'll address Commissioner Mann's questions. So this is actually, is a multi-disciplinary project. So of course, civil engineering is the number one thing to be performed because this work requires a professional engineer license in the state of North Carolina for things like utility connections, the grading, the infrastructure, stormwater calculations, et cetera. But they're not the only ones. They may also have surveyors for multiple parts of this. The surveyors, yes, we have a survey for the pre-existing condition, but they'll need to do some surveying and location of things early on the job and afterwards do our ASBIL. In addition to surveyors, we also have a landscape architect. You know, here we've got, yes, we have a conceptual plan, but we need also to make sure that we, this goes together. Everything from turf grass to planting some trees. And of course, there are miscellaneous things, things like the sidewalks, site fixtures, furnishing structures and equipment. They call it FFNE. So they've got a good portfolio in front of them for these professional services. But we believe we've got a well-rated firm here, located here in Dare County.
And this would be the start of the project to completion of just the first phase?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll address Commissioner Walker's comment, and that's another great point. It's not just the type of service they provide, it's also the breadth. So the breadth is basically from start to finish. They'll start with the design. They call it, we've already conceptualized, but they'll now do the design development. Then they'll do, they call them CDs or construction documents. And then during the project, they will also be here to do the inspections, CE and I, construction, engineering, inspection, closeout, ASBIL drawings, and the rest to make sure that we get what we paid for, that it's installed property and it's not at the wrong grade, or there are busts there. And we want them to be turnkey. I don't want, I don't want another firm to come in and say, and point their finger at the engineer or the surveyor. So I really wanted a turnkey project where they will do it all, and they'll be responsible for it all, and will hold their feet to the fire to build this thing right.
Would they be who's negotiating with contractors to come in?
And Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Mann's comment is about the negotiation. This firm offered as part of their service to assist with the bidding process. And what we'll do is, in this case, it'll be an invitation for bids. It's going to be to value high enough that the state law requires us to be formal sealed bids. It's going to be over half a million dollars in construction costs. So that's going to be the top level of requirements in the state statute. While the engineer will prepare all the bid documents, they will respond to with addenda or questions from the contractor. However, the actual management of the procurement will be the ones, will be the ones that have final say on conditioning the bids, making sure we don't have uneven bids where someone takes a line item and they try and sneak in the bid. Also, we want to make sure we investigate qualifications because we don't just want a bidder, we want the contractors to be both responsive and responsible. By responsive means they properly answer the invitation for bids. By responsible, that they have the ability to do the work, and they're, you know, not, you know, they're not debarred from contracting, things like that. So we want a firm that can work hand in hand with us, but we as staff will have final say, final say in making the recommendation to the board for its approval. Having been through these bids many, many times, we're ready for it.
This is Commissioner Collins. So the final approval will actually cover most of it?
Yes, Commissioner Collins, this board has final approval over that contract, and that's a big one. So it'll be the biggest one since I've been here. So that's going to be real important. This board sees it first, and of course, it'll see the appropriate daylight as part of that process. In fact, even the bid opening itself for a project of that size is open to the public.
With a lost revenue, the financial impact will be okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Selby was asked about the finances. In our current pass of the budget, we do have enough money to fund the project. Just for the record, the actual cost for this, we pay them and then we get reimbursed by the grant. But we need to have enough cash flow to cover that, of course. And that's projected for the next fiscal year budget, which you will be having to retreat at here shortly. So this, it makes good sense. And I think that's a great question, because why proceed with engineering if you can't proceed with the work? But what we are seeing is absolutely this project can proceed.
Do we have a grant for almost half of the project costs?
The grants, yes, Commissioner Walker, the grants $221,000 out of the $763,000. The, the grants, yes, yes, Commissioner Walker, the grants, 221,000 out of the 763,000 construction costs. Also, I will tell you that we made it past the first round for another intent for an EEG grant, a little over $80,000. Kudos to Town Planner, who did the vast, vast majority of that work, and also, she is at her desk right now performing work on a part of Grant, Parks and Recreation Grant out of the state. We had a lot of success with that in my prior jurisdiction, and looking for a six-figure grant on that as well, so we're actively working on additional sources of revenue for this, even while we're embarking on design.
Is there, I don't think it's appropriate to ask, is there a estimate for what, I guess, these services would cost the town?
Yes, the, the estimate was originally estimated $75,000 with a potential contingency of $15,000, and what we would, what I would like to do in a contract like this is perhaps to phase it, so that we don't sit there and we contract a phase-by-phase through our design development and our construction documents, and then the actual construction phase, and make sure we phase that, so this isn't just some big lump sum contract, that, that those tend to go sideways when it comes to billing time. We want to make sure we get it down to those different phases.
Is, and is there something in our codes or ordinances that require us to have a engineer for this type of project?
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Mann, this is for, from, from state law, I've researched both state law and the North Carolina Board of Engineers and Professional Surveyors, to perform all this work with, with utilities and infrastructure and the stormwater statement, and the other, and the other engineering and surveying work, we do need licensed professionals for that.
I thought it was part of the agreement to the county. Maybe I'm wrong on that, or in the grant, I can patiently, was it engineers stating it was?
Commissioner Burke, I don't, actually, I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry, but we can, we can absolutely look that up.
That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any more questions?
So, we, we're voting tonight, and then talking about the budget next Thursday, so I'd like to see the budget, and this is fun for me. Make sure, because everybody across the nation is taking the big reduction in the revenue.
But this is going to blow up the schedule if we don't do it tonight, correct? If we don't pass this tonight, one of the office engineering teams accelerated schedule they have laid out?
Yes, and Commissioner Burke was asking about the accelerated schedule, it wouldn't, it does envision us approving it tonight, so that they can get started here in the next couple of weeks and get, get rolling with it, and, and certainly, we will phase this contract. If there's, if we do get into a concern, we are going to phase it, so that we're, we have the overall contract, we do it phase-by-phase to minimize that risk, that's helpful.
So about one week can make a difference in the phasing?
Oh, I, I, no, it, it doesn't make a difference as, as the phasing, it doesn't make a difference as the phasing, it's just, oh, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I mean, we're really, you know, in the kind of a tight timeline, I mean, aggressive timeline, I guess is a better way to put it. You know, we're delaying it a month, and I think we still, in phasing it and having that final approval, it feels like we're still going to have control to trim the fat if we, if we need to.
Because we'll still be very involved, I'm assuming, in the contract after, I mean, if we were, once we approve the engineer, we're still highly involved in, I mean, I know that they're doing, selecting their own contractors and things, but like Jason said, if there's things that, you know, we want to trim, or the budget's, you know, getting out of hand, I mean, we're going to see that, right?
Yes, and that actually is a great point, that also may address, so Mayor Pro Tem Selby's and Commissioner Borland's, Commissioner Walker's comments, is that we're phasing the work with the, with the engineer, so that we can make sure that it's, make sure that we're not, we're not sitting here committing to the whole thing, and for some reason, the whole world turns upside-down, and, and we don't need that construction phase, whatever. I don't, obviously don't foresee that happening, we're currently projecting that we have adequate funding for this, but one of the things that I failed to mention is one of their tasks and activities, it's one that I usually think is, is embedded in this, they have to give us cost estimates. Before we ever go to bid, this engineer is expected to give us cost estimates, so that, you know, that this board can make decisions, like, okay, do we, you know, should we focus on the parking lot, green space, and the landscaping first, and save some money on site furnishings, benches, whatever that might be, so what we can do is make sure that this board can see that information, the cost estimate, before we ever go to bid, and make sure this project doesn't, you know, doesn't start to cost burden the town, or if cuts need to be made, where they can be made, because that's the time to do it. One of the mechanisms I used to use on my other projects, like the Law Enforcement Center, was we would take our base contract and then do add alternates or deductive alternates, and what I mean is, what are the things we have to have? Or if you start with parking lot and parking ports, and parking lot and green space park area, what are the things that we could add or delete to, to adjust the budget as part of that projection? But you got the cost estimate from the engineer first, but then the contractors are expected to bid those additive or deductive alternates, so that you, before you approve that contract, you have like almost a menu to choose from that will fit the available funding, so we'll make sure we take that approach, both with the engineer, but also if we present those bids to, to the contractors.
And I've got my question answered, but I certainly want to see the parking lot, because that's very important to Manio, but I do want to check out the cost estimate.
I think the other important thing, I mean, worth noting, is this is authorizing you to negotiate the contract. We're going to have that budget retreat next week before that's all finalized, I would assume, I know you move quick on some stuff, but...
There's a possibility, I think, I'm going to get in this a little bit, that we could say, I'm like you, Jason, that we could probably see the budget before this gets finalized, is that possible, James, or what do you think?
Yeah, what we could do, what we could do, Mr. Mayor, is to go ahead and have the contract ready to roll.
I think I know where Betty's coming from, is we're proving something that we haven't proved in the budget, and we're asking more for good faith than anything else, which I'm sure is good professional, I've heard of them, I don't even know who they are, but we, I see we have got to have professional services contract with somebody to carry all this out, and I don't think we, I guess, when is it, May the 14th?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, the, that retreat is May 14th, so if there, if, if a motion should come, it could be modified to say, to move, to authorize the town manager to negotiate the town common contract, and to sign the contract and any amendments, however, but not to sign such contract, or to sign such contract no earlier than May 15th, so that way the board has seen.
May, May, May 15th, that should, that should clear everything up, because then we'll get a look at the budget and this almost at the same time.
Yeah, because I, I certainly would like to see that project started, but, you know, being like officials, I want to know about the money, too, and Jason cleared it up, too.
Yeah, sure, Betty, that's only fair, you, we always be concerned about the money. Well, one way or the other, we've had a lot of discussion on this, can we have a motion one way or the other? Somebody make a motion, do something.
This is Commissioner Borland, I move to authorize the town manager to negotiate the town common contract, to sign the contract and any amendments, but not to sign it until no earlier than 15.
That, that should satisfy everybody. All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second, this is Christine Walker.
All right, there's a motion second that will approve Jason's motion, I don't exactly remember what it was, but go ahead and poll, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, aye or nay? Mr. Mayor, you're presented with a unanimous.
Yeah, well, all right, the motion seems to carry, so it's approved as the motion says, and so we'll move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Old business.
Yes, sir. Item number 8H, this is very, this may sound very similar, because...
You know, James, this is, this is, James, I got to say, this is a long agenda for a teleconference call, but I guess it had to be to get it all cleared up, I don't know, but it's awfully long, but go ahead.
Yes, sir.
We're into it, that's what I'm saying, we can't do nothing about it.
Yes, sir. Item 8H is the, is a contract for the wastewater system asset inventory and assessment. This particular, this sounds very similar, because like the last contract, we had to do it per state law to, to get engineering and related services procured. We did indeed follow the state process, we, we had four firms that submitted by the deadline and, and had qualified personnel. This particular one was also solicited statewide, as well as locally, and the highest rated firm listed as number one was Green Engineering out of Wilson, North Carolina. I will mention for, from a budgetary standpoint, as that came out, that the, this particular project is, it's, has a, its total budget is 172,500, which consists of $150,000 grant from the state of North Carolina, and then a 15% local match of 22,500, and these funds were already appropriated by the Board of Commissioners in its current fiscal year budget. And I'm recommending that the same process where we're authorized to negotiate a contract with the firm and continue with, in succession, and also then to sign the contract and any, any amendments thereto.
All right, were, were they only better, James?
No, sir, we had four firms, one out of Wilson, one out of Raleigh, one out of Kitty Hawk in Powell's Point, and one out of Kitty Hawk in Kill Devil Hills.
Any questions?
How long is this? Do we know how long this project's going to take?
Yes, sir, I'll address Commissioner Walker's question. Length of time, the, the duration of this will be negotiated with the firm as part of the process, as part of the process, both the fee and the schedule, but it's our understanding that this thing will be done within, within a four-month, four-month period, plus or minus a month, so it'll be a relatively quick hitter, but it's very important to our sewer system to know where, where all those assets are, because many of those assets were constructed by other contractors on behalf of other developers, and then the system handed to the town, so making sure we've got, got those assets, I mean, our staff will be able to know, you know, where a manhole is, and, you know, where an air leak valve, all these things, they'll, they'll have that information, that's way can better serve our customers.
We've been working on this for a while, we, is this the same, we did the water, we did the water?
Yes, and, and, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Walker's referring to another grant we applied for, that was the Water System Asset Inventory and Assessment Grant. Unfortunately, the town did not, did not get that grant from the state, they indicated again that our water rates were too low and to disprove it.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, but still, given the current situation, I couldn't recommend increasing, in the last, the fee schedule adopted earlier, I couldn't recommend increasing that water rate, so we may have to apply in a, in a future year for the water system.
I, I mean, I think this is a very important project, so I'd like to authorize the town manager to negotiate the wastewater system inventory contract, and to sign the contract and any amendments.
All right, you've heard Christine's motion, is there a second?
I'll second, it's Richie.
I'll second, it's Charlie.
Okay, there's a motion second, after Christine's motion, that's what I'm going to say, because it's awfully long. All in favor, say aye. Oh, they polled them, I'm sorry, James, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sir, I'll go ahead and poll, yes, sir, I'll go ahead and poll. Mayor Pro Tem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
All right, it's unanimous, so the motion cares, but move on, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 9A on the agenda, this is the recycling contract amendments. This has been before the board multiple times, as the contractor for the, for the recycling, curbside recycling program had come to the town with two proposed amendments to the contract. We also have some late-breaking news that came in just hours ago that I will share at the end of this presentation. First off, the board and the public have, have access to the staff report, where we solicited community feedback regarding the program, and it also provided the data, the data on that at prior meetings as public record. The contract amendments proposed by Bay Disposal are two. One is that they had a material resource facility close on them, and they're now taking it to an incinerator that does waste the energy with recyclables. Our contract currently prohibits that, however, the state has now officially allowed their permit to do so, because at least there is some recapping of that energy, and it's not just being disposed of in the landfill, so the state did confirm they've, they've extended that permit. The other part that the state has nothing to do with is the Bay Disposal was requiring a 50% cost increase for the service. They believe they could do that unilaterally, I've pointed out to them, we have an agreement, they may have open contracts in other jurisdictions, but not in this one. So, so I know, I don't want to labor all the, all the, all the staff reports, so there, I really want to split this into two things. Number one was the feedback on the incineration of recyclables. We didn't receive really big pushback from, from public comment on this, and it seems to be a reasonable compromise, especially given the state's authorized this, so I'm recommending that the board would approve the contract amendment allowing incineration, but this is only for the length of time permitted by the state, so we don't want to just make a permanent waiver, we want to make sure we align with what the state's doing on that. So, that's number one, and number two is their con, proposed contract amendment, the 50% increase, they, they couldn't even guarantee that would be the last one. My, my strong recommendation is not to accept that. I don't believe in unilateral price increases, when you've got a firm contract and they desire a five-year term for that, not the two-year originally offered. Now, a third point I want to bring up, and it's not required in a motion, but it's information the board needs to hear, just a few hours ago, we received a call from the representative of Bay Disposal, and Bay Disposal has indicated they've talked to other municipalities around here who are dealing with the same issue, as well as the declining revenues, and we'd heard in the press of other jurisdictions that are either, are considering changing or suspending these programs like this. So, what Bay is offering now, if we choose to, is they would go back to the way it used to be here in Manio, so from, I believe, from the minutes I saw, from like 2008 up to, up to basically 2017, it was a subscription-based service, where people who wanted the roll carts would pay for the service, and Bay Disposal would tip their carts according to that. In 2017, it was changed to a service where the town paid directly for that, as opposed to the people who wanted to do the recycling, so it changed in 2017. Right now, what Bay is saying is that, should we choose to do so, they would like to do a franchise agreement where they go back to that recycle, that, that first, subscription-based service, where they would charge 11.35 per can per month to the users who desire to use the cycling service. So, they have offered that. I'm not recommending the board take any action on that right now, but you needed to know that, should we, should the board take actions tonight, I'm happy to get more information from them on not just clarifying how they're going to do that, but also the procurement of such a thing, we want to make sure we don't violate state law, and did not have time to research the statute on that in the three hours before the board meeting that we had. But that was information you needed to know, that there is an alternative out there being offered by vendor. So, but right, right now, two things that I'm recommending now was, one, I was suggesting the board approve the waiver of incineration in accordance with the state permit, and number two, as a recommending denial of their request for a 50% price increase.
This is Richie, I just wanted to make sure I'm right, maybe a five-year contract with this company, right, is it a five-year term?
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, I'll address Commissioner Burke's comment. The term of this started in June of 2017, it was a five, it was a five-year term of agreement.
Okay.
The town had originally suggested two years, the, the vendor wanted five, and obviously, we're only partway through that.
Partway, okay.
So, we still basically have two years left?
Yes, and to address Commissioner Walker's question, the answer is yes, we still have two years left on a five-year contract.
But they're trying to amend that contract and increase the rate, right?
Yes, sir, as Commissioner Mann's comment, they are proposing a unilateral pricing, price increase. We, we, in some of our research, we found they may have so-called open contracts in other jurisdictions, which allow them to do that, perhaps on a yearly basis, that's not the case here in Manio, the, the contract is, is very clear on that point.
All right, what, what knife head did?
Mr. Mayor, they, they, some of the other jurisdictions, next head is actually as part of their budget process, see, it was reported that they were proposing to potentially suspend the service. Now, when that was, since the time that was reported, though, Bay Disposal is now, I, I, they explained to us approaching other jurisdictions here. explained to us approaching other jurisdictions here, perhaps with the same subscription based proposal. So I I did not know whether they gave this new proposal to NAGS head, but I would I would suspect it's a.
Let me suggest this. I just asked because I did hear what they'd done. Are the company basically, if we've signed a contract, aren't they breaking the contract?
Yes, sir. It was our it was it was our determination that would be breach of contract. And my draft letter was I we we have we pointed it out verbally, but we would do so in writing should depending on what the votes tonight.
I I just asked because I think your suggestion might be all right with me. You're suggesting that for the people who want it, go ahead and subscribe to it. Is that right?
That's what Bay disposal is suggesting. And interestingly enough, some of the community feedback we had, there were some folks who actually said they they would use the subscription based service if that was the option. So I thought that was that was interesting to hear. And apparently, it was used significantly before it converted. So for what, nine years, this service was used by as many as two hundred and forty three households in a subscription based service was the last piece of information I saw. And that compares to the two hundred and seventy five to two hundred and eighty five currently being reported now.
And that would really take the town that would be in the middle man that would be direct to the customer.
Yes, Commissioner Mann's point, the town would have no contractual obligation in terms of that, the roll cart tipping. Probably the only legal thing we would have to do is deal with a franchise agreement of some sort, but that doesn't require us to to pay Bay disposal. So and thank you, Commissioner Mann, for for that clarification.
All right. Are you making a recommendation, James, or not? Did I hear one or not?
Yes, sir. And and it's really two separate two separate potentially two separate motions since they're the exact opposite of each other. My recommendation was to approve Contract Amendment one, allowing incineration at that waste of energy facility.
Can I make one? Is this two motions, just one motion?
Two. I'd like to make a sub note here if we can for a budget retreat next week, if we could add, you might have already done it, but something to indicate like a onsite town recycling drop off center, whatever you want to call it, but some kind of self service recycling center of the town can.
Yes, and and Mr. Mayor, I'll address Commissioner Mann's question. That had been one of the options that was discussed previously, and he actually identified maybe some sites east and west side of town, if we would do some of those those smaller recycling kind of re convenience centers here. And that's certainly an option for us to supplement as well.
All right. Eddie, you put that form of motion or just suggestion?
I move to approve the Contract Amendment number one, allowing incineration. And I also move to deny Contract Amendment number two for price increase.
All right, you've heard Eddie's motion.
I get him.
Go ahead, there's a second. Who I don't remember, there's James.
Commissioner Borland, sir. May the second.
Okay, go ahead and poll, James.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Potem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
All right.
I seem to have it. Motion seems to carry. James, is that what you heard?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. We can verify the unanimous vote there, sir.
All right.
Item number nine B on the agenda, traffic and traffic calming measures on Sir Walter Raleigh. This is something the board had desired that we come back with additional information as we continue to work with traffic as well as getting information on traffic calming measures. The Manial Police Department on the traffic side, the Manial Police Department has had another round of data collection as well as enforcement that will supplement what you heard last time. Interestingly enough, as shown in the staff report, we we did have we did have folks in the in the traffic area. This is east Sir Walter Raleigh, east of sixty four, and then to the roundabout there at Keeper Etheridge statue. In this case, our traffic count in March was thirteen thousand four ninety five, and the eighty fifth percentile speed was shown at twenty four miles an hour. Interestingly, a hundred we it was although it was less than one percent, it's more than we'd ever want of people who are actually going thirty thirty miles or higher. At that time, we had nine speeding citations issued along with fifteen warnings for left of center driving. In April, that dropped. This both the vehicle count stopped dropped ten thousand nine hundred ninety nine, down from thirteen four ninety five, and this the at that eighty fifth percentile percentile speed was at twenty four miles an hour. In this case, less vehicle, it was still less than one percent, but more than we'd like. Ninety one vehicles are shown to be driving thirty miles an hour or higher. Two speeding citations were issued. Interesting, we believe this law enforcement believes that we may have reduced traffic count due to the current COVID nineteen restrictions, of course, but they also noted that they had increased tickets on the parallel street. So some people saw the enforcement on Sir Walter Raleigh decide to use Fernando's to cut through, and some of us, and we have issued some tickets on that street as well now. So pleased that MPD has stepped that up and will continue to to address those. Traffic calming measures, we members of the community had expressed concerns about traffic calming measures that were installed by town previously. These are called sometimes bump outs, bulb outs, or curb extensions. And I did confirm with DOT, DOT said, yes, the town had installed them with permission of DOT. It's DOT road in the past. They said, should the town want to do a ask for permission to reverse that, the town is free to do so. So we did hear back from the DOT on that issue. In terms of pedestrian improvements, we had we did ask the DOT about installation of a crosswalk there right at the playground there next to Cartwright Park. It's right now, and it looks like it's too close to the roundabout. It's only two hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty feet away, as I measured with the wheel. But the the DOT will take it under advisement. We haven't heard back on that one yet, but that's a trickier one. We also had seen in some previous plans about sidewalk on the north side of Sir Walter Raleigh. And we we would like to look for grant opportunities for that, should that be supported by the board, you know, and and its constituents. With regard to signage, there had been requests to put no parking sign on the north side of Sir Walter Raleigh in front of Haven Creek Baptist Church. I did get confirmation back from DOT that that wouldn't be allowed since that's a travel lane and there's not enough room to even shift the striping there. So DOT denied denied that as well, but they did provide us, you know, feedback. And last but not least, were suggestions to add more twenty mile an hour speed limit signs. The town staff was prepared to do that. Of course, we have to ask permission from DOT. It's their road. And interestingly enough, I just found out yesterday that their records have it as a twenty five mile an hour speed limit, twenty mile an hour speed limit zone. So learned something new about that. Apparently, that dated in nineteen eighty three, well before my arrival here. So those are those are the latest updates on Sir Walter Raleigh on those four categories. I know that no more motions are required at this time, but if the board would like to, you know, give us guidance on any of those issues, we will continue working with DOT. And they've been very, you know, receptive to the conversation involving multiple departments. So staff is happy to continue that that discussion with DOT should should you like us to do so.
This Commissioner Collins, can we get some additional signage that says kids that play? There's a small one there, but we need a bigger one so people can see it.
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Collins, town manager airs here. Yes, kids that play. I'll go ahead and see if we can get permission from from DOT for that one. And that's something the town staff could also install. So hopefully, we can get some get some permission there.
So are we saying that it is a twenty five mile per hour zone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll address Commissioner Walker's question. The town has listed as a twenty mile an hour zone because, as you know, as you've seen elsewhere, we're thirty five miles or twenty miles an hour unless otherwise posted. Interestingly enough, though, DOT records, and they sent me the actually actual their ordinance or their regulation that showed it as twenty five miles an hour established back in nineteen eighty three. So I just keep that information as some after this after this published.
In nineteen eighty three, what in the park?
The speed limit on all the spots, great.
What can we can we can we request that it be lower?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll just Commissioner Walker's question, Mayor and Mayor Potem Selby meant you mentioned about that was a while back where some of these things may not have existed there, whether it's a park or the museum or whatever. Commissioner Walker's point about petitioning DOT for lowering, I'm going to I want to investigate that a little bit because I want to be very careful in how we address this and don't don't have it go the wrong direction on us in terms of speed. But I'll I can address that at staff level and try and do some inquiries without setting the upper card.
This Commissioner Collins, what the speed limit on the east side of this block is twenty?
Yes, Commissioner, then it's it's twenty on the other side. And in the report that I saw from NC DOT, they specifically referred to the segment from west of Sir Walter Raleigh to Bedford Street. So they were very specific in their old eighty three ordinance on that segment of the street.
Why is it five more? The speed limit is five more than the other side?
What what was that?
I don't remember.
Darryl, what did you say? We couldn't hear you, Darryl.
I said, why is it? Yeah, this is Darryl. I just asked the question, why is it five miles fast on one side and that was the?
Um, yes, Commissioner Collins, and the DOT has a different when when they when they they they're in the eighties, when they were doing that, they had different, they would do various kinds of data collection. And presumably, again, I can't speak for them from that era, but when I saw it in other jurisdictions, they would do traffic counts, speed data collection, et cetera. And they would actually modify even, you know, if a stretch of road is different from one one segment to another, they would do varying speed levels based on the data they collected at that time. But I'm but I'm happy to try and figure out what kind of a path forward we might have to, let's just say, make it consistent.
I have a question. Is it possible in the future, when we're able to have some people in here for a couple of time, being there's such a strong presence of the community around there that had concerns that we maybe facilitate a public hearing about issues on that street with send out an invitation to our DOT representative to have them here as well, so we can kind of have a roundtable discussion and involve our DOT rep along with the community to maybe remedy some of these issues?
And yes, I'll address Commissioner Mann's question. The I'll go ahead and follow up with DOT and find out if our DOT rep and their and their staff and the community, we can have some form of hearing here so they can hear community concerns. And I will follow up what process they have for that and see if there's some way we could push that sooner rather than later. And surely, there's got to be some way, even in the current situation, to have the voices heard. So happy to happy to investigate that.
All right. I think we've talked long enough on this. And I think Eddie made a suggestion that we have a a public hearing, Eddie. Is that what you want to to talk about the traffic measures and everything?
Yeah, I guess public hearing would be the appropriate term for with our DOT rep.
Yeah, are you asking that some of the public be invited or all the public be invited?
All the public be invited.
Yeah.
And I'll just.
I don't I don't I don't think we've been very fair with this with the public that's involved, but that's just my opinion, and I don't have a vote. I think that'd be good to have DOT here represent and then talk about at a roundtable.
That's fine, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate the feedback from from the Board of Commissioners, and we will we will continue working with DOT at different levels to see if we can move forward. And if you'd like if you'd like me to move to the next agenda item?
Yeah, yeah, move to C.
Thank you, sir. Next up, item nine C. This is new business. I'm sorry, this is you're under old business here. This is it was an issue of the conversation with Board of Commissioners about utility relief during the current coronavirus COVID nineteen pandemic. This one at the at the last meeting, there was a request to kind of consider different options on this, ranging from ranging from kind of a an across one, you know, what let's gather the data on what it would cost to provide relief in different, for example, residents and businesses, et cetera, as well as some of the other. I do have also have some new information on this that will help. So in the in the staff report shared in the package available for the members at home or following along, one of the options was to kind of look at an estimate of what it would cost for utility bills for all accounts from May first to September first, plus by category. So what we've seen here is we've got a spreadsheet that basically shows May, June, July, and August. Now, keep in mind, July is also our our quarterly billing in addition to those who are billed on a monthly basis. So that's why July is that quarterly payment is traditionally higher. What we're seeing here is we've broken into two real areas, residential, commercial is one part, and we started to see on that four month period, three hundred and thirty four thousand seven twelve seventy nine for residential, one hundred and fifty six thousand six twelve and thirty on commercial, for a total of four hundred and ninety one thousand three twenty five oh nine as the estimate for that four month period from five one to five nine for residential and commercial. Now, we did split out institutional irrigation. It would be it was it was my understanding that 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 is those would be separate things. Those would be separate things, but those numbers are shown there just for, you know, comparison purposes for the so that we could show the total water spend on that on that four month period. So but that was that was one approach was to kind of look at this as a as an across the board thing. We've got the data there to show that. A second option was to look at, we had looked before that resident relief fund that originally that was targeted just for residents, but then there was the question, would that could that be extended to businesses? And there's nothing in the statute that would prohibit it prohibit that fund being extended to businesses as long as coming out of the general fund and not the utility fund. So that one, at the time, it was estimated, it was just was this a limit put out there of a hundred thousand dollars, and it was only supposed to run through the emergency period and up to ninety days following that period because there may be there can be people still hurting even after the emergency declaration happened. A third option, and this is something we also looked at and made sure we were okay from a statutory perspective, the governor's executive order would allows a repayment here for people who are have past due or a rear re rages, as they call it, it would give them up to six months to to get back, you know, to repay that that money. But one thing that we have the ability to do, and the board has already allowed this in in our in the recent emergency declaration, was to do perhaps longer repayment period. So if someone's really in tough shape, giving them, say, nine to twelve months to repay it at a rear origin, so that so now they're paying the regular monthly bill now to get back on the feet. So and then one twelve, one ninth, or one twelfth of what was past due seemed like a flexible way to that. That was another approach that could be done as well. So we were trying to go with some different approaches with different pros and cons. One piece of information that's new that you probably want to hear, what's the order what's the order of magnitude here? So far, what are we seeing the impact on our customers? So the latest information we have, and this is what we're having, we're having a new report we have to submit to the state as part of this executive order. So we're obliged to report the state current past due accounts. And this is for the entire month of April. So when the executive order was in place from March thirty one till the end of April, we have residential accounts, we have seven thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and eighty eight cents as past due. And on commercial accounts, we have ten thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and sixty three cents for the non residential, non residential accounts. So our total past due here in during this, well, we've been in since March, so now up to the here at the beginning of May, is eighteen thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty one cents worth of past due bills. So I was I'd be honest, I was worried that number would be much, much higher. So that one that one was was actually an interesting data to hear. I thought you ought to hear the latest information we got here.
How was that compared to other other months, like pre pandemic numbers?
It's it's higher than pre pan it's higher than pre higher than pre pandemic numbers. And it's and we also I will I will say, though, going back like year over year over year, there has been significant variation. One one thing that we found in the past year, our, for example, our customer service representative had been calling past due accounts as opposed to just having it go past due, and they actually had reduced by a significant margin past due accounts we even had over the last twelve months. So but I will say it's 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 definitely up due to the current crisis. I'm just thankful it's not worse. Folks are obviously feeling the effects of this.
Well, James, what are you doing? Are you asking us? Are you just giving us information or you ask us for a motion?
And and no, no motions are required at this time, but I know the board.
I thought we handled that last time. But now, how about this six months and twelve months?
Yes, sir. The board already authorized me to to take and do payment programs as appropriate. I wanted to make sure the the board has with options this time. I just want to make sure you had the information. We can continue those payment plans should the board desire to not take any other action. So there's really no motion at this time. And honestly, our suspension of disconnections doesn't end until the end of June anyway. So if the situation changes and gets much worse in terms of our folks who are past due accounts, the board can take action in June should we see these numbers change.
Well, you'll let us know about that then.
Yes, sir.
This is Commissioner Walker. I'm concerned though, still with the, the fee, the bank fee on the online payments or the phone payments. Has that, has the bank responded?
Yes, this is for Commissioner, Commissioner Walker's question about the convenience fees. And the board had taken a quick action on that to make it more convenient for the people, for our customers to actually do this. We're using a third, a third-party credit card company that's, that's working, all, working in conjunction with our bank. They had to send it to legal because this must, this must not happen very often. So they, they expect us to have some, to have our new documents to sign next week. However, as I put out in my town manager's report, we are crediting anybody who paid convenience fees that this board took action, they're being refunded to their account and we're tracking every single one of them. So we want to make sure the public gets, gets that convenience and we're going to do the right thing.
Yeah, yeah, because I've had, I've had some, you know, questions about that. I just, you know, I think it's the least we could do to make it easier if we're not going to, you know, offer any other kind of relief.
I think, because I pay my stuff online. So I noticed on my bill, I paid the credit or the convenience fee. And then on my next month's bill, it was, that amount was credited to my accounts, so it's best to take it also.
Thank you, Commissioner Mann, that, that makes me feel good that it's actually working for, you know, one of our customers. So thank you for sharing that and I'll, I'll share with the finance staff as well.
All right, James, if anything further on the C.
This is Commissioner Collins. This pandemic will be over with before we decide what we're going to do from the sense of the town as far as water and sewer. I mean, water, this water thing. So I think we need to do something right quick. I like the second idea myself, the one that we did, we talked about at the last, at the last meeting, which is the establish the relief fund with a maximum of five hundred dollars per household and a limit total value of a hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, I really didn't understand you. I don't know if everybody else did. I couldn't, I couldn't decipher, I got a bad connection, like I said earlier.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Would you, yeah, would you repeat it?
Yes.
In his wording, James, so I could understand you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner.
Did you hear me, James?
Yes, sir, I, I've, I've got it here. Commissioner Collins put a motion on the floor to, to establish a resident relief fund with limitations on use, maximum five hundred dollars per household and a limit on total value of a hundred thousand dollars for the program.
He, he did make a motion?
Yes, I, Mr. Commissioner Collins, I, I, I thought I heard you say that was your motion. Am I, did I repeat that?
I'll make it as a motion because we need to do something and stop messing around with this.
Is that on water and sewer or everything?
That's water and sewer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't disagree with that.
But that, I mean, I'll second the motion in order to have more discussion.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Walker has, has seconded the motion in order to.
All right, you'll have to repeat the motion because I really didn't understand it. Go ahead, James.
Yes, sir.
I mean, with, with, with Darryl's approval, of course.
Yeah, go ahead, James.
Thank, thank you. The, the motion was on the floor was to establish a resident relief fund with limitations on use, maximum five hundred per household and a limit on total value, a hundred thousand dollars for the program.
Yeah, okay. All right, y'all have heard the motion. There's discussion, that's where we'll get into it.
Yeah, I think just to point out, the, the alternative is, and I understand the thought to act now, but the alternative is the, because we've paused or ceased through the end of June, late fees, that we've got time to wait without really any change to see how things do change, you know, and then, you know, if, if that's not doing enough, the current motion on the table, then, you know, see where we're at in a month. So, I mean, I, I understand the, the idea to want to knock it out right now, make sure that we're taking care of people. And I don't think that delaying it a month make that decision. I think that just equips us to make a, a better decision without hurting people in the interim. I know it hurts to see a bill keep showing up that you're not paying, but really, it's just the emotional impact of receiving it because we're going to hopefully take care of it through action in June.
Yes, yes.
Now, James, help me out here. If, if my understanding is state law that sooner or later people got to pay their utility fees, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. If I.
Is, is, is Darryl asking for granted relief with that action or not? What, what, Darryl, what are you asking for?
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking for what we're talking about on the May fifteenth meeting. We're supposed to establish a fund with a maximum of five hundred dollar household and a, a limit of a total value of a hundred thousand dollars. And like, like I said before, this money is coming from one spot to another spot. It's not, the money is not leaving us. These people are just getting relief on their bill if they can. And everybody's not going to take advantage of this because some people have pride and, and, and want be able to take care of the business. So everybody at the time is not going to take, take advantage of this. So, and I don't think we'll spend a hundred thousand dollars.
James, you want to help me out on this and understand?
Yes, sir.
How do we get around it without, when we got a state requirement that the, the water bills had to be paid sooner or later? Even if, even if it's twelve months down the road or say twenty-four months down the road, it's still got, oh, am I right?
Yes, sir, with the, there's, and there's a couple, two parts to this. One is the, there is a prohibition against using utility fund fees or a waiver of.
That's right.
But there, there's a different state law that would allow us to use general fund dollars. And I believe that's what Commissioner Collins is referring to.
Okay.
And then to address Commissioner Borland's comment, the governor's executive order already does indeed take us out to the end of June so that there are no late fees or, or disconnect fee or even disconnections until the end of June under the current executive order. So nobody, and, and under, and under this board's own emergency declaration done before the governor, there's, there's no disconnection is going to happen, happen right now. I think this board did, did a great leadership role in trying to take care of the community before the, we got the word from Raleigh.
I just would like to make sure that the customers and the residents know, you know, the policy or about the repayment plan and, you know, the fee, the late fees and things. You know, like Darryl said, there's going to be some people that are going to pay the bill and go without something else, unfortunately, because of their pride. But, you know, and I'm sure that Kim and the other staff, you know, are making them aware. I hope that that is an option. Or if we could somehow advertise it, you know, at the drop box. I'm not sure how to get the word out on that, but, I mean, I just, you know, I just hate it. I know that, you know, people, it, it is, you know, it's been, it's, it felt like a couple of months. It's almost a couple of months now for some people that have been out of work. You know, so I know that, you know, it's getting tight and, you know, I, I want to help them as much as I can. And, but if we could at least get the word out on that, on the options.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may address Commissioner Walker's concerns here, if, it's all right.
Yeah.
There's, and Commissioner brings up a good point. So in, in accordance with the governor's executive order one twenty-four, the town took the following, took the following steps to notify all of our customers. In addition to notices on the website, press release, social media, we also did a flyer in English and Spanish in every water bill that went out, both monthly and we got, of course, the quarterly's here as well. But that was, you know, that, that gave them full, full knowledge about suspension of disconnect, disconnects, disconnections and no penalties right now and all that information, as well as the six-month payment plan the governor said. But to Commissioner Walker's point, we, if, if the board is okay, we, we could advertise the longer payment terms that the board has authorized us, you know, has authorized us to do so that folks know they have some additional relief even beyond what the governor has stipulated in his executive order. So we've tried to get the word out in, in every channel we can to every single rate payer. But certainly, we can do more if the board's comfortable with extending longer repayment terms.
All right, go ahead, someone.
I just know there's a lot of information right now. You know, everybody's trying to stay on top of everything and, you know, everything, policies are changing and, you know, the dates and things and it's hard to keep track of it all.
I was going to ask about the, the flyer, but then as you were talking too, it made me think. Is, is any of that automated where it's printing a late fee on the bill even though it's not actually due? Because, you know, when I open up our mail, I stand above the trash can and I open it up and I throw everything but the, what's got the dollar amount. And so I probably would, you know, if I opened that mail, I probably would have done that with it. So if then I've got the late fee on that actual bill, I'm not going to see that. And I know that's my own fault, but is, is the late fee showing up on bills?
Right, and for, and, Mr. Mayor, I'll answer Commissioner Borland's question. Our understanding is we are, we're obliged to let folks know what those, you know, what they would, what those late fees would have been and that we have to report that to the state, what the late fee would have been and how many accounts we would have disconnected. But I also see, you know, one of the ways we thought was a great thing was to stuff the mailer with, with, you know, with a bilingual, a bilingual message. But even, even that may not have reached all of our rate pairs. So we could certainly redouble our efforts if that's appropriate.
Well, we've got a motion, we've got this bench with, you can't just just ignore it unless Darryl wants to withdraw it or go on forward with it. And you've heard his motion. So, can we, can we second, go ahead, Darryl?
Let's just see what the pleasure of the board is on this motion.
All right, is it seconded Darryl's motion?
Uh, the, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Walker had, had seconded Commissioner Collins.
Okay, I, I didn't hear, I'm sorry. I, I have trouble understanding or hearing. Okay, there's a motion second on Darryl's motion.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, take a poll, James.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, I or nay?
Aye.
Uh, that's an aye. Commissioner Burke?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Nay.
Commissioner Borland?
Nay.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins?
The ayes seem to have it, there's two nays, is that correct, James?
That, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. The motion carries five to two.
Okay, well, the motion carries, we'll go on with the motion. I really don't know what it is, so you'll have to explain it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a point of clarification, I gave you the wrong number. It's, if motion still carries, it's four to two. So thank, thank you, Commissioner Walker, for the clarification. Appreciate that. Next up on the agenda, item nine D. This is the, this is the selection of town attorney. This particular topic is one that the, the board has seen and, and of course, the public has seen that there was a request for proposals out there. Proposals were, were submitted by two law firms here in the area. And this would, this would be the time when the board would have its opportunity to select a town attorney, presumably through a nominating, a nominating and discussion process. One, one other thing that I would mention is that should the, should the board select a town attorney tonight, I would respectfully request that, that the board would authorize a town, a town manager to, to assist the board in negotiating and signing a written contract for legal services with the new town attorney. These firms have submitted proposals. I, I think it's absolutely appropriate, it's appropriate for the board to have a written agreement. And certainly, I'm ready and willing to assist you in, in formalizing that and of course, bringing it to the board for ratification as appropriate.
All right.
Take a part.
Mr. Mayor, I'll address Commissioner Borland's question. On that second part, there would, a motion would be needed, but I know that's premature. I was just making sure that you're, you know, I'm here, I'm ready to assist. I know the first order of business would be for the, for the presiding officer, Mr. Mayor, to call for nominations, which of course, according to.
I guess, I guess you're going to help me along, James. We got, we'll have to open nominations for the appointment of the town attorney, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so we'll open nominations for a county attorney.
I nominate Jeff Maloney.
And, Mr. Mayor, that was Mayor Protem Selby who nominated Jeff Maloney as town attorney.
Okay, Jeff Maloney's name has been suggested, is another name.
I'd like to nominate Ben Gallup.
Mr. Mayor, that was Commissioner Burke nominating Ben Gallup as town attorney.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Collins. For the record, the mayor should recuse himself from voting on this. I'm siding in ethical conflict of interest with one of the nominees. Mr. Maloney is a longtime friend of Mayor Owen's family. And as mayor, who's the chief officer in charge of town government, it's not best practice or in the best interest of the town for him to appoint a friend of his family to the upper echelon of town government for which he has a complete oversight and direct supervision. Also, I'd add to the record, the request for proposals that was set out by the town from, on February the fourteenth, soliciting the proposals for the town attorney. I'd also like to add to the record the two proposals that we, we received from Maloney and McCowen and the other one from Thorn, Thornhall, Raleigh, Ellis, and Milan. So that the citizens can see for themselves where some of us believe there's the best interest of the town for a firm to have the institutional knowledge, the resources, and also is offering their services to the town at a substantial discount that will in the long run will save the town money.
Well, for Darryl's information, I was not planning on voting. I don't remember ever having the permission to vote. I thought the mayor usually stayed aloof of the voting and didn't have a right to vote. Unless I'm correct, I think that was passed many years ago in time. I don't know what Darryl's intentions are, but they certainly don't sound honorable because if he's referring to my son, he has no interest in Manio and doesn't care for Manio and never has, which I love Manio and I do care. I don't know what Darryl is referring to. I'd love to know because I could rebuttal him. But I don't recall, since I've been here for one year, I've ever voted on one thing, which I'm not allowed to vote about according to the ordinances of the past, which Darryl was a part of.
Okay, well, you have to recuse yourself from this vote.
I don't have to recuse, I just don't vote.
I'm not sure what Darryl said, audio.
That, yeah, the end of that was.
Yeah.
Scratching.
At the end, I added to the record the request for proposals that was set out by the town on February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, soliciting legal services. I also add to the record the two proposals that we received from Maloney and McCowen and from Hawthorne, Raleigh, Ellis, and Milan. So the citizens can see for themselves who the, some of us on this board feel is more capable firms to represent the town with the institutional knowledge, the unlimited resources, and also is offering their services to the town at a substantial discount that will eventually save the town money in the long run for legal services.
Yeah, I, I caught that, thank you, Darryl. So you want to put the information that we had in confidentiality so that the public can see what we had to make our decisions off of?
Yeah.
And yet, and yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may address that, the, from Commissioner, Commissioner Collins to Commissioner Borland. Yes, the, both the, our request for proposals itself and the proposals would be considered a matter, matter of public record. They've been, they've been opened and that would be, that would be a matter of public record. So we'll find.
I, I wasn't under the impression it was closed anyhow because our entire manager's open knowledge for everybody.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I still don't know what Commissioner Collins is referring to and I would love to know.
I just wanted to be in, in the, attached to the minutes of this meeting so that everybody can see it.
Well, for the record, if you want me to, now I will do this and I think I'm allowed to do it. I do know Jeff Maloney, I do know Ben Gallup. And I think if you're, if you're impugning Maloney's character, I would take the issue with it because I would suggest you look at his total record.
I'm not taking anybody's.
It's a lot more honorable than some people I know, Darryl.
I'm just trying to do what's best for the town man here.
Oh, thank you for that. Thank you for that, you always have. On every single issue, Darryl, you've been so selfish and jealous, it's unbelievable. And the, the record speaks for itself. On every single issue, Darryl, you've been so selfish and jealous, it's unbelievable, and the record speaks for itself.
I'm gonna.
You're not, you're not the cleanest, but you're not the cleanest person in town, you know.
Yeah, you're not either, Mr. Mayor.
I don't claim it, but I know my past and I admit all of it.
I don't have to do it either.
Well.
All right, let's move on. We have the the name of Jeff Maloney and the name of Ben Gallup offered for the nomination of attorney. We'll take Ben Gallup first, all in favor of Ben Gallup, say aye, or record it.
Are we gonna have a discussion on it?
Good discussion.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you all off, I didn't mean to.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's with the the audio clicked a little bit and Commissioner Borland had had engaged here, I believe.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jason.
I did, I did want to speak on both these guys and I didn't, you know, I mean, I, this has gone on a while and I think all of us have put a lot of thought into it. As I was reading through that, there are FPs for, I think, the third time last night, I found myself reading through Ben's first, thinking, this is great, he'd be fantastic. Make my notes, put that aside, and I pick up Jeff's, and I think, man, this is great, he'd be fantastic. And that's what we said, both these guys are gonna put us in a great position. I didn't question integrity of of either guy, for sure. But, you know, I I found that Ben had himself an unfair advantage here, because he's already doing work for us and he's had the opportunity to get in front of us and and impress me. And so that's that's is what it is, but it's, you know, I think if Jeff had the opportunity to be in front of us, he probably would have impressed too. But as luck would have it, Ben did. And so I think there's, for me, I can't justify essentially firing Ben and asking him to step aside. And so, yeah, that that's my comment on the on the two of them. My further, I wanted to make public my thought process on on the two guys. But again, I think both of them, I'd be excited to have a part of this team, for sure.
All right, anybody else?
I have a thought. I think both attorneys are very well qualified. I will speak to, I think it's unfair to use this as an opportunity to grandstand and try to muddy the waters, to make anybody feel like whoever their choice was, prior to today, that was in any way, the waters were muddied. I think it's an unfair opportunity to use as an opportunity to grandstand to people to to try to push a agenda. And I'll leave it at that.
To piggyback off, I do want to make clear, I did I did not take the mayor or Jeff's integrity relationship into account. I personally don't, don't think there's a conflict of interest there. Yeah, but I I think I can stand by my 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 chain with it with integrity, for sure.
Well, let me say this, with all candor and all seriousness, I made up my mind this afternoon, and I know Ben, I can work with him just as good as I can work with Jeff. I I prefer Jeff, naturally, I don't deny it. But I can promise you this, I will work just as closely with Ben Gallup as I would have Jeff Maloney, because my first love is Manio and doing the right thing, without grandstanding. Anyone else? All right, we have before us Ben Gallup and Jeff Maloney, all for Ben Gallup, say aye, or you take the cordon, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. If the first nomination, the first nomination that was made was Jeff Maloney's. So I believe I'm obliged to go in the order in which the nomination.
That's fine.
So I'll go ahead and do the roll call, Mr. Mayor, if that's all right?
Yeah.
All right, Mayor Protem Selby?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke?
Nay for Jeff Maloney.
That's correct, yes, to clarify for the public listening, this is on the nomination of of Mr. Jeff Maloney. Sorry, I'm making making sure I've got I've got notes. Commissioner, Commissioner Mann? Commissioner Borland?
Nay.
Commissioner Walker?
Nay.
Commissioner Collins?
Nay.
Okay.
Record the vote, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir, the vote is four to two against the nomination of Mr. Jeff Maloney as town attorney.
Okay, all right, all in favor of Ben Gallup?
Yes, sir, I'll do the I'll do the same thing again, I'll go I'll go around the tape, around the room. Mayor Protem Selby on the nomination of Mr. Ben Gallup.
Nay.
Commissioner Burke on the nomination of Ben Gallup. Commissioner Mann on the nomination of Ben Gallup.
Nay.
Commissioner Borland on the nomination of Ben Gallup.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker on the nomination of Ben Gallup. And Commissioner Collins on the nomination of Ben Gallup. Mr. Mayor, we, the final vote is four to two in favor of the nomination.
All right, we we seem to have a new town attorney who is Ben Gallup, and you'll notify him, Mr. Manager, and take care of all the procedures that you have to do.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
When will this go into effect?
Okay, so, oh, Mr. Mayor, there's a there's a there's a question. There's a question from Commissioner Burke about when this would go into effect. So from a from a contractual standpoint, right now, the only agreement that the town has with Mr. Ben Gallup is for a scope of services related to planning and zoning matters with a particular segment of town. So that letter agreement would have to be modified and and brought back to the board before, you know, ratification. But I'm happy to do that, as well as transition any other files that may be handled by other council that is, you know, that also has has a letter agreement with the town. And we'll we'll go ahead and close, transition those cases in consultation with the attorney selected by the board.
So and within the next couple of days, but we still have to use Wyatt.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, because I think Melissa said she had to use Wyatt recently.
Yes.
For some issues.
Absolutely, that is correct.
We didn't have it.
The town still has letter agreements in force with the both both of those attorneys for, you know, different segments of its business. So we're not left without counsel, but we understand the will of the board is to move forward with Mr. Ben Gallup as town attorney, and we'll make sure to settle those files in an appropriate manner.
Thank you, James.
So Wyatt, do you think he'll pay?
Yeah, to answer Mayor Protem Selby's question, there were some files being closed out by Mr. Wyatt Booth under his current letter agreement, and we'll go ahead and expeditiously handle the the closure, the transfer, closure of all appropriate files.
So we're paying the two attorneys right now?
Mayor Protem, we we have agreements with two attorneys, but we're not double paying because they're working on different issues. Thank you for the clarification.
This Commissioner Collins, can we get out a letter of appreciation to Wyatt for his services to the town manager? Some kind of letter to recognize his longevity and town manager as a town attorney, and for the mayor's signature?
Yes, I don't see why not, he's pristine. And he's he's served us as long as other people. How long have he served the town immediately?
At least ten, twelve years.
At least twelve.
All right, we don't have no problem with sending a letter of appreciation to work he's done in the past, I don't have any problems signing that, James.
Okay, and and presumably, that something like that wouldn't require a motion, the board, if I'm if I'm categorizing it like.
That's what I'm thinking.
Mayor typically signs like proclamations and things like that, so if the board has consensus that a letter can be drafted, is appropriate. Happy, I'm happy to assist in that if the board would like.
This Eddie Mann, I'm moved to authorize the town manager to negotiate and sign a written contract for legal services with Ben Gallup.
A later.
Mr. Mayor, that was a motion from Commissioner Mann authorizing authorizing a town manager to do handle the contractual arrangements for the new town attorney.
Yeah, good. Is it a second?
Second.
And that was from Commissioner Borland, Mr. Mayor?
All right, there's a motion second that we accept and expedite the process of having Ben Gallup as a town attorney, all in favor? Go ahead and poll, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Selby?
What was that again?
Oh, for and for the public listening, this is an authorization for the town manager to negotiate and sign a written contract for legal services with the new town attorney, so that in in accordance with the will of the board, that we go ahead and get a letter agreement, so we actually have something in writing to the new town attorney with his new scope of work as town attorney.
For Ben Gallup, aye.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Burke? Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Collins? Okay.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir, it looks like there's a unanimous vote on that motion, and I believe that would take us to the agenda, to the nine, agenda item nine E, if it's all right with you, sir.
Yeah.
All right. We have, we have, we have before the board, a, this is the flood damage prevention ordinance and flood maps that it has heard about previously from the town planner. Also, he has gone to planning and zoning, but we have our town planner, Melissa Dickerson, who will be giving a short staff report and give you an update on the latest, the impact of the of the new law on your deliberations. Town Planner Dickerson, are you with us?
Yes, I am, Town Manager Ayers, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, for what seems to be maybe the the twenty-fourth opportunity that I've had to talk to you all about these, the the new flood maps and the flood damage prevention ordinance. Shared with folks around the lunch table today, socially distanced, that I was coming to work today and I was really excited that we were gonna be able to go ahead and move forward with these, if you all if you all felt prepared and ready to move forward. And then we received some information from the school of government regarding the new law that was signed in, the new bill that was signed into law by the governor on Monday. So my recommendation to you all is that you add this topic to your mid-month meeting for action, because due to session law, twenty twenty dash three being signed into law by the governor on Monday, May third, and the requirement in the law that that requires an additional twenty-four hours to allow for written public comment after public hearings. So while you all had your public hearing on this matter earlier tonight, the new law requires that we that we be available to receive written comments for the next twenty-four hours. So that means that that we need to move this to your mid-month agenda for action, and I hope you would consider doing so. That is the update from me.
Thank you, Town Planner Dickerson. Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is, this is what I'm referred to as late breaking news. Governor signs the law on Monday, the school government at six ten last night sends us an update indicating this is buried in here, but it's intended to help the public in that with electronic meetings these days in the current crisis, some folks may not have, may not have had an opportunity to attend a public hearing or their phone line or whatever it might be. So that's why they added this extra requirement that for twenty-four hours after the public hearing, that written comments may come in. So in accordance with that law, I'd like to inform members of the public that you you have an additional twenty-four hours from this meeting to submit your written comments. They should go to the town planner at mdickerson@manionc.gov. So that allows, again, more transparency there, and that there's no motion required of the board tonight, as this item would now be, this item would come up for a vote at your next board meeting.
Okay, all right, next item.
Yes, sir. Item number ten is mayor and commissioners' comments.
Yeah, I don't have any comments, except I'd really truly like to apologize again to the board for my lack of knowledge and teleconference, and this has been complicated and all, but we got through it, and so that's all I got to offer. So somebody jump in, I don't know, order seating arrangement, I'll try to remember. Betty, go ahead.
First, I want to say that the July fourth event that we canceled, I want everybody in the town and the county to know that that was a hard decision, like you said, a hard decision, but it's a decision for protection and safety. And we enjoy those events just like everybody else. Rough, make that happen.
Mr. Mayor, next up would be Commissioner Burke.
Okay. Oh, I I I'm looking at my seating arrangement in my head, how it normally is, but you you tell me who's the, go ahead, Richie.
Oh, I'm fine, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Next up would be Commissioner Mann.
For our town commons, I know we have a discussion on it next week, but I think it would be nice if we could have a community, whatever you want to call it, community action group, community committee, because the community's been so involved in this town commons process, to maybe have a small group of community citizens to be involved with the process going forward with the town commons to help facilitate some things, work with you, work with the engineer contractors to to involve the town people in that entire process, being that they've been so involved prior to now to keep that momentum going. Second thing I have is I love small-town government because we all get to help each other. I think every one of us at the at our core want to help our neighbors. I think now more than ever, we should remember that, even though we may disagree on issues, we shouldn't attack or discredit anybody, but we should use it as a way to help each other, understand each other, instead of using things to bring each other down or tear each other apart. We should try to to figure out a way to to mend people together. I hope going forward, we will continue to do that.
Okay, James?
Yes, sir, next up would be Commissioner Borland.
Yeah, I, to follow on Eddie, I think the way that the town common project came about through the community and the how involved and invested everybody is, I think it makes complete sense to have a, I don't exactly know what that looks like, but a small working group to, the last thing we want to do is to slow this down. I think something that you talked about was the schedule that hurt ears up, and that's, you know, moving pretty quick, and that's a good thing. But to keep people involved and, you know, whatever, it's a working group, steering committee, I don't know. But to keep them involved and help help steer things right. And then, you know, I mean, it it's true. With everything going on and social media and opening the bridges, this has been an ugly time, and I want to make sure that we're being respectful of each other and setting a good example for for everyone else. You know, who are we here to sit and judge of one, you know, out there attacking each other for the difference of opinions? We're up here to talk about our different opinions, and it's okay. You know, it's okay to disagree respectfully, and, you know, I I hope, I hope we don't agree a hundred percent on everything, otherwise we're not gonna get anywhere productive. So that's, that's, again, all say for that, to the four people who who are still on the line, appreciate you hanging in with us.
Melissa.
It's a long meeting and it's frustrating, like the mayor said, so we'll hopefully get back to normal at some point.
Yes, sir, next up is Commissioner Walker.
I really didn't have much, I just, again, want to thank, you know, James and everybody, and and Mayor, you you've done well over the phone, you're getting used to this. It was a long agenda and and we got through it. I did just want to say, you know, I hope everybody has still completed their census, because it's very important that we do that, even though we're not having, you know, people at our door, you know, and and so forth, but would like to remind everybody just to please complete their census. It did not take long at all online. did not take long at all online, but it's very important that, you know, we know what we have here in Manio, and, and we can safeguard, you know, our small town. And I'll just thank, you know, the town staff for the continued services that we're used to, and you would never know anything, you know, going on with the pandemic, pandemic because, you know, everything's just kind of continuing like it does. So thank y'all.
And, Mr. Mayor, the next, next up, and, next up would be Commissioner Collins.
All right. Darrell?
If I step on some people's toes, I'm pleased to accept my apology. I, I respect everybody on this board and for what everybody brings to the table. James and I talked about somehow recognizing the employees who worked for this pandemic. I don't know how we could recognize them, maybe monetarily, or, but I want us to think about how we can reckon because they didn't miss a beat. The town ran smoothly through all this mayhem. And so if everybody on the board can maybe talk some ideas of how to recognize the dedication of our employees and how they made the town a better place to this tragedy, that's all I got.
All right. James?
Yes, sir. That, that, that is the seven members, mayor and board of commissioners for that item number ten. So next one would be, item eleven would be adjourned to recess, and I'd make a comment.
We recess, don't we?
Yes, sir.
When is the work, what date is the workshop?
Yes, sir. The, the budget retreat would be at eight thirty on April fourteenth. So we would, the board would recess to that, the eight thirty.
All right. We'll, we'll, we'll declare recess till when?
I'm sorry, May fourteenth.
I thought it said, I thought you said May the fourteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was May. I accidentally said April in my, and, but the commissioners here have corrected me, and I appreciate that very much. So the recess to the budget retreat would be eight thirty on May fourteenth, and I guess a mo, a motion would be, would be necessary.
Yeah.
What, what is that gonna be at, James?
A town, yes, yes, Commissioner Collins, that would be at, at Town Hall with social distancing in place.
Okay.
Yes, and Commissioner, the confirmed Commissioner Mann is at eight thirty AM.
Okay, we will, now we'll declare recess to May fourteenth, eight thirty. We gotta have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Mann has, has made the motion.
I'll second.
And, and Commissioner Walker has seconded. Is that all right? Go ahead and poll, sir.
Got a motion, a second, that we recess till May the fourteenth at eight thirty at Town Hall. All in favor? Oh, go ahead, you got, poll, James. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Selby.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous vote.
All right. All right. We stand recess till May the fourteenth at eight thirty. Y'all, everybody be safe and be happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.